All right. Freddie Olson?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to call the May 26, 2020, Orange County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. If everyone would join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which contains one nation, under God, indivisible, just as for all.
Hey, we're getting better at this. All right. I have one addition to the agenda under new business. It would be item 5F, and that is consideration of extension of appeals to the Board of Equalization until June 15th. Any other changes to the agenda that anyone has? If not, I would entertain.
Modified.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, welcome, Mr. Goodwin.
Greetings.
Very good. All right. Mr. Saunders, are you on the line?
We need to let everybody know where we are.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Uh, let's see, Mr. Johnson?
I'm at my home located at 13451 Albano Road, Barbersville, Virginia.
Okay, Mr. White?
I'm at my home on Berry Run Road in Orange, Virginia.
Mr. Goodwin?
I am at my home at 11464 in, or on Rapidan Road in Orange, Virginia.
Mr. Frame?
I'm at my home on 103 Locust, or Woodland Trail in Locust Grove, Virginia.
Okay, and I am at 33 Pier Point, New Bern, North Carolina, my second home. All right. Now, Mr. Saunders, are you on the line?
Sir, Mr. Crozier, Chairman Crozier, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Yes, Chairman Crozier, members of the board. Tonight, I'm going to provide a brief overview of your latest monthly report. I do want to note that on the call with us this evening is our Assistant Resident Engineer Bethel Cattiallo and our Operations Engineer Aaron French, so they've joined us this evening as well. So I'll walk through a brief overview of your current monthly report and address any questions that you may have. I'll also stay on the call through the adoption of your secondary six-year plan and can address any questions at that time as well. So we'll get started.
All right.
From page one of your monthly report, the smart scale. The county submitted three pre-applications for projects for smart scale funding. And those were roundabout at Route 20 and 522, intersection safety improvements at Route 3 and 20, and also around about at the intersection of Route 231 and High Street. The 2522 and 231 high streets are resubmittals, so we're evaluating those scopes and refining the estimates, and we'll get the information back to the county for the August application deadline. From page two of your report, several project updates to go over this evening. Route 602, that's broken down into five project segments, and we're going to complete them one at a time. East of Route 692, Burr Hill Road, we planned to hard surface those two project segments early this summer. And then we'll shift to the west side of Route 692 and begin working on those three route segments of Old Office Road as the funding becomes available. The next project noted, Route 2231 Somerset Roundabout. The work is progressing on that project. The completion is still scheduled this fall, 2020, so they're marching right along. Enchanted Way and Mountain View Court, our Roseville area headquarters will begin work on these two rural additions in the eastern end of the county later this summer. Route 635 Greenwood Road, construction is underway to replace the bridge over the railroad and completion is scheduled for next summer. And then the Route 601 safety improvements, the project design is advancing. We still plan to host a public hearing later this year. I'm not quite sure what that's going to look like, but we're still scheduled to host the public hearing later this year. And still on that page, down at the bottom, page two of your report, on to resurfacing. I did want to note the resurfacing program's underway. VDOT's project website, the public website and the map that's on the website identifies all of the project routes that are included in this year's research and schedule in Orange County. And it even, I just checked it, has the status update for 231 and several of the other projects that are currently underway. So please check that out and point your constituents towards that. From page three of your monthly report, that there are several district-wide projects noted there that are underway. One that I didn't want to call out is the installation of the rumble lot, of the centerline rumble strips around the county. And we're, those route segments are listed, so that we're glad for those safety improvements. From page four of your monthly report, there are a few items to review. We have two speed studies underway, one that's noted there, Route 1034 Taylor Avenue in Gordonsville. And Bethel is also following up with the traffic engineer to evaluate Everona Road and the speed limit through the northern segment, just north of 20. It's the southern segment of, I'm sitting here looking at the wall, of Everona Road. The current speed limit is 55 miles an hour, and she's evaluating the signage and the speed limit through there. And also tractor warning signs and with our traffic engineer looking at different locations for those on the western part of the county. From page five of your monthly report, I did want to note that the volume of land juice action's underway. Our land juice team is busy. And also that it's not noted on the report, but we did receive the wilderness crossing traffic impact analysis, and we're excited to get that review underway. And down at the bottom of the report, our crews from Roseville and Gordonsville area headquarters been busy, have addressed 1,000 and six work orders so far in FY '20. So they've been very busy. And then, as always, there's a link at the bottom of the report to your Board of Supervisors manual. And gentlemen, that's the review that I had planned this evening. Can I address any questions?
I do have one, Alan. Do you know if Bethel was able to get a signboard out for ag traffic on Route 611?
No, sir. I do not know that. She did reference, she did reference that.
Okay.
I'll check.
Very good. Any other questions for?
Yeah, I had a question, Alan. When you're looking at that, that study on the wilderness crossing, the, I looked at that thing and it looks like it may substantially reduce the traffic flow on Route 3. I'd be interested in your views on it. They had three lights between 20 and, and Lake of the Woods, and they say that'll have an 18-second impact on the, on the throughput. So I'd be interested in your staff's view of that.
Well, Chairman Frame, that's another one that I'm going to need to follow up on.
Okay, I realize that you have anything on that yet. That as I looked at it, it, I realized that you guys know your business, but I was stretched, three new traffic lights and changing the throughput time by only 18 seconds just didn't feel right.
Well, our traffic engineers will go through and they'll look at the models in the back of the report, and they'll begin to replicate and check every single one of those.
Okay.
And 18, just ad hoc, from my perspective, 18 inches of addition, 18 seconds of additional delay is not unreasonable if the signals are programmed in such a way that they can communicate with one another. And you have platoons of vehicles that are currently stopping erratically at different points, whether it's Lake of the Woods or Points to the East. If they're moving in unison, because the signals are communicating to one another, that may be reasonable.
Okay.
But once we get into, once we get into the, the traffic review, all of the, the signal and timing data that was in the back of the report, they'll use the same software that the developer's consultant used, and they'll attempt to replicate all of their modeling. And the traffic engineers will build their own model, and they'll check all of that.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted somebody to look.
Part of their review.
Because.
But I noted that.
When I read through it, it just didn't seem reasonable to me, but I recognized that there are things I don't understand.
Well, I'm grateful that you read through that. It's a hefty, it's a hefty read.
I didn't, I read through the executive summary. I did not, and that was only about 26 pages. I didn't read through the, the 300 or 400 pages that came with that.
Well, if you, if you have any questions about some of that information in the back, one of the exercises that we've gone through in the past is taking one example and just walk through a sample of what the information is showing with the turn analysis and the timing, and how we model that and attempt to break it down in non-technical terms and see if the public has any questions or if the board has any questions about the methodology and, and how we're evaluating one phase of one intersection. And that may give you a better feel for what the traffic engineers are doing. And at that time, if you have any questions, we can look at each one.
When, when they gave us the briefing on that, it sort of went fast and furious. And that's why I asked for a paper copy, so I could actually sit down and go through it, which I did, at least enough to be able to have some decent questions. So I'll be interested in following through on, on that single track if you do that.
Oh, good, good. We, we will, we'll get on schedule for that. And I applaud the developers' effort. That's a, that's the biggest TIA I've ever seen. So they've, they've done a good job. You can tell they invested a lot of time and thought into the solutions along the corridor.
By the pound, they really done well.
Yep. All right. Any other questions for Alan? All right. Alan, thank you very much, and we know you're staying on board, so we will move right along then.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion on the consent.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Right. Passes unanimously. All right. Item 5, new business. The adoption of the auxiliary list for the second, secondary roads. Ms. Simpson? Allison, you need to unmute.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in front of you is a copy of your current auxiliary list for consideration of adoption. We typically do this at the same meeting when you take action on adoption of your secondary six-year plan. I only want to note, in addition to the board reviewing the list to determine if there are any projects that needed to be added or deleted, I only want to comment that we should remove Harbor Drive from the current auxiliary list because it was added to the secondary six-year plan this year and no longer needs to be included on the auxiliary list. So again, you have your current one adopted in November of last year. In front of you, up for discussion with staff's recommendation to remove the two identified segments of Harbor Drive.
All right. Very good. Any discussion, questions, concerns? Going once, going twice? Looks like we're in good shape, Allison.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt it as recommended by staff?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, Allison.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. 5B is the Navigation Easement Acquisition. Mr. Hildebrand?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, before you is a memo that identifies the last two remaining properties that we had targeted to secure navigation easements over in relation to the runway 26 end of, of the Orange County Airport. I do want to make one correction in my memo. Identified parcel 3141J as 28,000, and the correct number is 28,800, which is reflected in the email from the FAA that approved those amounts. So 28,8 is the correct amount. So that wraps up, that wraps up the last two parcels for that end. And it's a long time, long process, but I guess we're finally seeing light in the dark. So I'm seeking the board's authorization to execute purchase agreements and deed of easement for those two acquisitions.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh. All right. Passes unanimously. All right. Kurt, you're still up for item 5C, which is FAA grant application for obstruction removal, design and land services reimbursement.
Yes, sir. As you can see, it's kind of a long-winded memo, but I thought this, this project has been going on for so long, and it's so infrequent that I'm in front of the board. I just thought it would be a good idea to just kind of recap where we started and where we are. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have as far as the, the history of what's occurred from 2008 till now. But I did want to make the board aware of one thing that I failed to put in this memo. As the board knows, I meet with the FAA and the Department of Aviation every year, usually early in the calendar year. Usually we meet in March or April to go over the airport capital improvement plan. And I think I had mentioned to the board two years ago, in 2019, when, when we were in that meeting, because of these unresolved obstructions, the FAA mentioned that we may be required, or they may require of us to do a displaced threshold on our runway. That would not be certainly desirable on our part, especially given the fact that we had recently done a resurface of the runway and re-marked everything. That would mean we'd have to go out there and, you know, black out all the markings and re-mark some stuff, and that cost would be totally bare on us. There'd be no grant money for that. So we were able to, we were able to make a little bit of progress on these acquisitions to kind of stave off needing to do that. However, what I wanted the board to be aware of during the ACIP meeting this year, 2019, or 2020, the FAA did require us to, well, they actually did it. We had a partial, we had a partial DPS approach to runway 26, and partial meaning it had higher minimums than what we will get when we get these obstructions removed. Anyway, the FAA suspended that approach, and they put a note out to, to all pilots. So from, and that happened around April 1st. So from April 1st until we get these obstructions removed, we do not have an instrument approach to runway 26. That's certainly a negative for the airport, but all in all, that's, that's not a terrible decision. And especially honestly, given the fact that activity at the airport's pretty limited at the moment with the COVID issue, there's not a lot of people flying. So anyway, I just wanted to make the board aware that that's a compromise that we, that we had to come to until we get these obstructions removed. So unless you guys have any questions on the history part of things, there, there are two items in this memo that I'm requesting board action. And one is, as you can see from the memo and the attachments, I, we have a proposed task order from Delta Airport Consultants to put together the design of the obstruction removal. And, you know, I, I think I mentioned in the memo kind of the history of that and the independent fee estimate and all that stuff that we went through. But the FAA has approved, has approved that task order in the amount of $140,300. And the second item is, now that we have that task order, if the board approves that, that would be included in our pending grant application to the FAA, which will pay for that task plus reimburse us for the remaining costs that we've incurred for the land services and easement acquisitions for runway 26. And as you saw from the memo, our, our grant application will be for the amount of $475,000. And also of note, as you saw in the memo, we're in a good environment right now as far as the, as far as the grants go. It'll be 100% reimbursement from the FAA. So no local share and no need to have to try to meet the time windows to get a state grant application in. So with that, I will take any questions you may have.
Very good, Kurt. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Unanimously. Thank you very much, Kurt.
Thank you, Kurt.
All right. And once again, thanks for all the work you do out there, Kurt. That's a lot of stuff to do with the FAA, no question.
Yes, sir. You're welcome.
All right. 5D is the Historic Courthouse Roof Replacement and Exterior Repairs. Mr. Kane?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. If you recall, in FY '18, the board authorized CIP funds for the roof replacement to the historic courthouse. This, that consists of three roofs. To date, we have done the main roof of the courthouse. If you recall, there was some significant damage that we had to move quickly on that roof, and then we decided to phase in the replacement for the other roofs. In FY '20, we go, went ahead and allocated more funds for the renovation of the historic clerk's office. We tied that all into one project. So since, since the initial allocation of funds, we have done the main courthouse roof replacement and the roof replacement on the historic clerk's office and the renovation to the clerk's office. And now the remaining work that, the work that remains to be done is the tower roof on the historic clerk's, courthouse, rather, and the porch roof, as well as the repairs of the damaged cornice and painting of the structure. Staff has received a proposal from Abbey Construction utilizing the VASCUP contract through University of Mary Washington. And Abbey Construction is the contractor who completed the renovation of the clerk's office, and staff feels confident that they will be able to perform the remaining work on this project. The proposed cost for the work is 1,000, or $119,812, and funds are currently available in the project line C1138. So the board has agrees, we, staff would like to proceed with executing the contract with Abbey Construction for the remainder of the roof replacement.
Thank you, Aaron. Any questions or comments?
Move to approve.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I. Very good. Thank you very much, Aaron. And that's.
Before we leave, has, have we made any progress on the, is anything going on with the clock? The tower clock?
I have, I was in, kind of talking with a local citizen who is part of a clock. A group, and he actually provided a lot of insight. And I was working with him, and he was getting some information, and then the pandemic hit. So access to resources and contacts is limited right now. So he has contacted me since and basically said we can pick back up with it after the pandemic, and we can start talking to people. But my initial thought is that it, for the most part, that clock might be in pretty good working order. Just maybe a little bit of lubrication and tweaking some, and making some adjustments. But I wouldn't be surprised if we do all the maintenance on it if it, if it worked just like it was brand new.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, it's definitely on my, on my list to tackle once we get everything back open and running.
Very good. Thank you, Aaron. All right. 5E is a resolution to authorize use of a supplemental retirement plan for the county administrator. Mrs. Bradlock?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This resolution would authorize the staff to move forward with the use of a supplemental retirement plan for the county administrator. Part of the contract, as you know, that the board entered into within new county administrator, allowed for contribution to the retirement plan of his choice. The retirement plan that we offer is a supplemental plan for our employees is a 457 retirement plan, and he is ineligible for contributions to that plan because of his separation with Powhatan County earlier in the year. So this is a plan that is run by ICMA RC. ICMA RC is already a vendor that we deal with because the VRS uses ICMA RC for the administration of the required contribution portion of retirement plans that their hybrid employees have. So we're, we're familiar with them. We use their payment facility for our, for our contributions to them. And this would just be another offering. But the only person who would be eligible for the use of this plan is county administrator. Mr. Frame, and I talked earlier, and he did have a couple of questions. Mr. Frame, I was unable to reach my contact with ICMA RC to get those answers. But I, I did want to say that I think this is a plan that the contract does give us the option to terminate with 60 days notice. And it may be a vehicle that Mr. Warby's would not need beyond, say, a year because the way the IRS rules work, all the limitations are based on the calendar year, which is the reason he needs it this year because he's already maxed out the contribution for the other type of plan that is our 457 plan. So it may be that this is a temporary need for both of us, but I do need a place at this point to be able to direct those contributions.
I didn't have a problem with the, the concept or anything else. It's just when I read through the, the contract, I would never sign one of those personally. That's why I talked to Tom, and I guess he had some comments. But I'm just, just concerned because there were things like that as long as he's got money in the fund, that we need to pay $1,000 to your management. And that seemed like a, sort of a, something that we wouldn't necessarily want to do. Anyway, I'll leave it to Tom and Glenda to work that out, but I just didn't feel comfortable with the contract as I read it.
All right. Any other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Glenda.
Thank you.
All right. Item 5F. We've, I've had a number of questions about this, including one today, and that's to extend the filing date with the Board of Equalization until June 15th. And I've spoken with each of you, and based on the other extensions that we have granted due to the unusual circumstances, felt that this was worth bringing forward. So I would actually make a motion to extend appeals to the Board of Equalization until June 15th.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions or anything? All right. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Very good. Passes unanimously. Okay, very good. Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Um, and now, uh, Ms. Simpson, if, um, under old business, the adoption of the secondary six-year plan?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again, um, in front of you is a resolution for your consideration to adopt the secondary six-year plan for fiscal year, uh, 2021 through 2026. This matter was carried over from your public hearing that was opened on May 12th. So you heard the matter in a presentation from VDOT that evening. Um, we've had it open for two weeks for public comment and it's presented for, um, again, for your consideration this evening. I will note, um, the appropriate thing to do, um, once you open it up for board discussion, would be to have me review any public comment received and then we'll have the chairman officially close the public hearing before you all should take any action on the resolution. Um, and as you know, Alan is on the call. If you all have any additional questions or like an overview of the plan at this time.
Very good. Uh, and in such, uh, what comments have you reviewed, uh, received, Allison?
Um, I have received no written public comment to date.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Is there any board discussion on this? Questions, comments, or a motion?
So moved to approve.
Need to close the public here.
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes. Uh, close the public hearing at this point. And, uh, looking for a second.
Second.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, that's taken care of. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, I don't believe we have any director or constitutional officer reports, uh, that I know of. And then, um, next would be county attorney's report. Mr. Latchney?
Uh, no report, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Um, county administrator's report, Mr. Voorhees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, uh, one item and that's that I'll be continuing to reach out to board members to try to pin down a date for a retreat, which is trying to make it as painless, uh, as we can on everybody's schedule. So I'll, uh, be reaching out to more over the next day or two.
All right. Very good. Thank you. All right. Uh, board comment? Anyone have anything? Well, I do. I received a phone call last week from, uh, Culpeper County Board Chair Gary Deal. And he informed me that he was trying to put together a conference call, uh, with Virginia Department of Health over some issues with a agricultural business in our county and the problems that we were causing for Culpeper County. Um, and as I always like to do, I've made sure I went to the party instead of being excluded and hearing about it later. And in so doing, um, there was great concern that one of our local businesses were, was busing infected employees into Culpeper County, uh, to do shopping and then bringing them back to the place of business. Well, uh, before I left the meeting, the Virginia Department of Health confirmed exactly what our fire and EMS had researched and confirmed was not only did they not have an issue with the employees that were being bused to Culpeper to go shopping, that none of them are infected whatsoever, and neither was the facility. And that facility has received a tremendous amount of bad press. Um, and even with that being said, there was a great effort on the board chair from Culpeper to try to tell what Orange County should do. And I, I would, um, like to request the support of the board to craft a letter to the chairman of the Culpeper Board of Supervisors and, um, it just to reconfirm the fact that, um, there is a river that finally defines, uh, the separation between Orange County and Culpeper County. And we work together very well on many things, but, uh, we've already had an assault from the east, um, from another county, sending traffic into our county, uh, that we don't believe is fair. And, uh, plain and simple, I'm sick and tired of dealing with other counties trying to tell us what to do, and I don't believe it's their right. So I would look for the support of the board, um, to craft with the county attorney's assistants, a letter to the board chair of Culpeper County.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I think, uh, reciting the facts as we know them, uh, and is sort of the basis for that, I think is, is an appropriate action.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other comment?
Uh, I, I mean, go, go ahead, Mark.
Well, I, I was just going to make the case that, that if you go to the Virginia Department of Health, uh, website, and, and this is not something that ordinarily I would, I would draw attention to, but, uh, under the circumstances, uh, if you, if you take your, your little, uh, your little mouse finger and hover over Orange County, it shows 86 total cases. And if you hover over Culpeper, it shows 638 cases. Uh, so it seems a bit odd for, uh, the Culpeper Board to, uh, act as though, um, you know, we're the, uh, we're the dog that has fleas.
Precisely, sir. Precisely. Uh, Mr. Goodwin, you had a comment?
Uh, not anymore. I don't.
Very good.
Something about glass houses and stones.
Yeah. So, uh, I, I, I would presume that by that head nod, uh, I, I have the blessing of the rest of the board to craft a letter.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much, gentlemen. All right. Um, no other board comment, uh, informational items, and then on to appointments to boards, commissions and committees. Does anyone have any? All right. Very good. Uh, calendar, um, do we have anything that we need to schedule, Ms. Simpson?
Yes, we do have one addition to the ca- the calendar, but if I can draw your attention back to appointments to boards, commissions and committees, um, we did receive a request from the Rappahannock Juvenile Detention Center, um, to appoint a, an alternate for Glenda. Um, Glenda is currently, uh, appointed as the Orange County representative on the RJDC board. They're requesting an alternate in case she's unable to attend. And in the past, we've had the county administrator serve as her alternate. Would you all be, um, okay, appointing Ted as alternate for Glenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Perfect. Thank you.
There you go. Thank you, Ted. All right.
One addition to the calendar. Um, so you all already have a, a request to schedule a public hearing for SUP 20-01. It's listed as mid-Atlantic polytechnic on your agenda, but it should be pyrotechnic. Um, this is the Pyrotechnic Arts Guild. Um, Planning Commission is holding their public hearing on May 21st, and we are requesting your consideration to schedule a public hearing for June 23rd, um, 2020, which will give us time to advertise. Um, additionally, as item 13B, we would like to request the board's consideration to schedule a public hearing for your June 9th meeting to consider a budget amendment and supplemental appropriation for the funds that the county is receiving from the Federal Cares Act. I believe Ted or Glenda sent an email, um, about it last week and because it exceeds 1% of our consolidated budget, right, Glenda? Um, because it exceeds 1% of our consolidated budget, it does require a public hearing. Um, we're able to have the public hearing on June 9th because it has a, a shorter advertising window than our standard, um, land use action. So we want to do that on June 9th and have you all be able to take action, um, before the end of the fiscal year on June 23rd.
Very good. Entertained motion? Okay, a second?
Aye.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Those are scheduled.
Thank you.
Okay. And at this point?
Mr. White doesn't be here at this point, so.
Uh, yes, he, he's, he had to. Yep, 41. Thank you very much, sir. All right. At this point, we will go ahead and, um, recess until the, uh, 6:00 PM hour, at which time we will do our public hearing. Okay. Thank you very much. See everybody in a few. Thank you very much. See everybody in a few.
But if I can draw your attention back to appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. We did receive a request from the Rappahannock Juvenile Detention Center to appoint a, an alternate for Glenda. Glenda is currently appointed as the Orange County Representative on the RJDC Board. They're requesting an alternate in case she's unable to attend. And in the past, we've had the county administrators serve as her alternate. Would you all be okay appointing Ted as alternate for Glenda?
Bill moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. There you go. Thank you, Ted. All right.
One addition to the calendar. So you all already have a request to schedule a public hearing for SUP twenty dash oh one. It's listed as Mid-Atlantic Polytechnic on your agenda, but it should be Pyrotechnic. This is the Pyrotechnic Arts Guild. Planning Commission is holding their public hearing on May twenty-first. And we are requesting your consideration to schedule a public hearing for June twenty-third, twenty twenty, which will give us time to advertise. Additionally, as item thirteen B, we would like to request the board's consideration to schedule a public hearing for your June ninth meeting to consider a budget amendment and supplemental appropriation for the funds that the county is receiving from the Federal Cares Act. I believe Ted or Glenda sent an email about it last week. And because it exceeds one percent of our consolidated budget, right, Glenda? Because it exceeds one percent of our consolidated budget, it does require a public hearing. We're able to have the public hearing on June ninth because it has a, a shorter advertising window than our standard land use action. So we want to do that one June ninth and have you all be able to take action before the end of the fiscal year on June twenty-third.
Very good. Entertained motion? Okay, a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Those are scheduled.
Thank you.
Okay. And at this point?
Mister White doesn't be here at this point, so.
Uh, yes, he, he's, he had to. Yep, four to one. Thank you very much, sir. All right. At this point, we will go ahead and recess until the six P M. hour, at which time we will do our public hearing. Thank you very much. See everybody in a few.
Can you hear me, Ted?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I see you called and quite actually know I was napping. Hence my late arrival. I, I woke up and it was like, oh, my God, it's four fifty-seven. Like I said, did you not get my email back, do you?
So I did.
Okay.
Your preference is to avoid the twentieth, but it doesn't say that you absolutely can't live with it.
No, I, I can survive with it. Like I said, my, my anniversary is the nineteenth. So, yeah, Saturday, we usually do something for it. So if we're going to meet early and, and be done in half a day, yeah, okay. But, you know, happy wife, happy life.
I do not want to be responsible for stepping on your anniversary celebration in any way at all.
Well, that, that, like I said, that would be more in the evening. So if we were going to meet, you know, and have it extended till later in the night, no, I really don't want to do that.
But maybe nine to, nine, nine to three might, might work?
That would be fine.
Good. Allison, are you back?
I'm here.
Okay. And.
Did you get your script?
Uh, yes, I did. Yes. All right. Andrea, we're, we're back on live, correct? Or still on live, correct?
Yes, sir. You are still live.
Okay. Very good. I will reconvene the Board of Supervisors meeting. And at this time, we will have our first public hearing. It is an ordinance to require a surety bond for impounded animals. We'll consider the adoption of an ordinance to require in the posting of a surety bond for impounded animals pursuant to section three point two dash six five six nine F of the Code of Virginia. The board may require the owner of an animal held for more than thirty days to post a surety bond for the amount of the cost of boarding the animal for a period of time established by ordinance, but not to exceed nine months. Mister Latchney, would you like to give our, your presentation?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is something requested by the Sheriff's Office. Michael Cass, I think, originally made the request. I, I don't know if he's on or not and wants to speak to it. But it's simply the, the scenarios where we wind up having to hold animals for shorter periods or even extended periods of time. It costs us quite a bit of money. And so this is, this is something that's authorized in state code. So the Sheriff's Department just asked us to adopt an ordinance so that they could seek these bonds when appropriate.
All right. Very good. Major Lookhouse, was there anything you needed to add to this?
Uh, no, sir. I think it's, I think it's fairly self-explanatory. I mean, I can say that here in the last two weeks or so, I've had several invoices for the care of a, of a horse that we have seized due to poor condition. And the horse was granted to us in lower court. Due to the condition of the horse, there is a appeal that's getting ready to go forward. The current, without the ordinance, currently the common law's attorney has to ask for a surety bond in court. That's scheduled for June second, but it seems like that might get pushed off. And I can say here in the last couple of weeks, I've had to pay invoices in the amount of six hundred dollars per month for that horse and the foal that's involved as well. So this can be quite expensive when we get to these situations. And if these people do appeal, I think it's only right that they should pay for the, for the animal because they would if it was theirs pending a hearing in circuit court.
Was that six hundred each or six hundred total?
That's six hundred each month, twelve hundred dollars.
I mean, per animal.
So right now, it was for a pregnant, it was for a pregnant mare. The, the, the baby wasn't born until a short while ago. So I'm sure that my costs will go up.
All right.
All right. Very good. Any board comment, discussion, questions, concerns? All right. In that case, we will open the public hearing. And because this meeting is being conducted remotely, there's no opportunity for physical public access to the meeting and no opportunity for public comment. However, all interested persons are invited to submit written comments for the board's consideration. Written comments may be submitted by mail to attention Allison Simpson, P O Box one eleven, Orange, Virginia, two two nine six oh, or by email to asimpson@orangecountyba.gov. It must be received by five P M. on Monday, June eighth, twenty twenty. The board intends to close the public hearing and consider this matter at its regular meeting on Tuesday, June ninth, twenty twenty, after receiving any written comments. All written comments will be read during the meeting on June ninth, twenty twenty, and entered into the meeting minutes. All right. At this point, we have nothing further, so I would entertain a motion.
Bill moved.
Second.
All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
We are now adjourned. Everyone, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. You, too.